Okay.
I call to order the Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Workshop Voting Meeting today, Monday, July 28th, 2025. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Courier-News and posted on the board's website at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. May I have roll call, please?
Dr. Beatty.
Here.
Ms. Cassell Dunn.
Here.
Dr. Coleman. Dr. Pixley. Ms. Prouse.
Here.
Dr. Schoolman.
Here.
Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Ms. Fardman.
Here.
Ms. Morton.
Here.
We will now recess to executive session. Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 10:4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss matters related to HIB. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10:4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I move that we reconvene to reg-- I'm sorry, I move that we recess to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I move that we reconvene to regular session.
Second.
Roll call, please. Dr. Beatty.
Here.
Ms. Cassell Dunn.
Here.
Dr. Coleman.
Here.
Dr. Pixley.
Here.
Ms. Prouse.
Here.
Dr. Schoolman.
Here.
Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Ms. Fardman.
Here.
Ms. Morton.
Here.
We'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, our communications from between our last meeting, or actually before the last meeting and this one, include lots of references to our decision to outsource after school and then one question about the budget. Our next item is the approval of minutes for the hybrid special voting meeting and preliminary budget presentation for March 17th, 2025, the hybrid workshop voting meeting and executive session one and two for June 23rd, 2025, and a hybrid special workshop voting meeting on July 10th, 2025. I move that we approve those minutes.
Second.
Dr. Beatty.
Yes.
Cassell Dunn.
Yes.
Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Dr. Pixley.
Yes.
Ms. Prouse.
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Ms. Fardman. Ms. Warhies.
Yes.
And we'll move to our superintendent's report.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I have a couple of items. Um, Angela, are you gonna click for me or?
Okay.
I have a feedback, is that? Feedback on my? Anybody else here in the feedback on my mic?
A little bit.
Is there, can you adjust the mic a little bit to, for the feed, for the feedback from my mic? Uh, just a little feedback? Or like squeak, I don't know. I'm making it, I'm saying that it's feedback and I don't actually know if that's what it is.
Something like a ringing.
Ringing? Test, test? Test, test? Test?
There you go.
Okay, good. All right, perfect, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna begin first with the presentation on our test results from the NJGPA and ACCESS. Uh, after that, um, I will either go into just two informational items or I can break for some questions and then go into two informational items. I want to update everybody on our transition to Champions. I had a great meeting with them on Friday, um, and a couple of items to talk about with their hiring and subsidy and things like that. And then as well with the overnight out-of-state field trips and where we are with that information. So I'll begin with our test results. So first, NJGPA. So, um, the statute requires that the state graduation proficiency assessment is administered to all grade eleven students. The NJGPA is designed to measure the extent to which students are graduation-ready in ELA and mathematics. So it's a required test that all eleventh graders have to sit for and attempt to try, and it's a requirement. If students, um, don't sit, then they're not eligible for any other graduation pathway. So it is a required state assessment. The ELA component is aligned to grade ten standards and the math component is aligned to Algebra I and Geometry standards. So a little bit about the NJGPA, on May 3rd, 2023, the New Jersey State Board of Education adopted the proficiency level cut scores for ELA and math on the NJGPA as well as the menu of alternative assessments and aligned cut scores. The cut score for ELA and math is seven hundred and twenty-five. Students who take but do not meet the minimum required score on each component of the assessment will have the opportunity to receive additional supports and take the following steps. So they can either retake the ELA and/or math components of the NJGPA in the summer or the fall, meet a designated cut score from the menu of substitute competency tests, or complete a portfolio appeal. So like I said, the students have to sit for the test and if they are not successful and don't pass, then they can select from these menu of options. So we do have students that did not pass. Uh, so this summer, we're running the test again. Depending on where we fall with that, we may have to do it in the fall or students can opt for one of these other options. The, uh, here is our comparison of our spring 2025 test administration. So you can see, um, the graduation rates, uh, graduation-ready rates for our students as compared to the state. So for ELA, our, um, graduation-ready rate was eighty-four point three percent, um, versus the state, which is eighty point seven percent. And for math, fifty-eight point three percent, um, versus the state's fifty-eight percent. For the students not yet graduation-ready was fifteen point seven for ELA versus the state's nineteen point three and for math at forty-one point seven, um, and the state was forty-two percent. Uh, so our comparison from the spring of 2024 last year to this year. So for ELA, our students that were graduation-ready in the district, uh, we had eighty-nine point two percent of our students, um, last year. The state last year was at eighty-one point six, uh, so we were slightly higher. And then math, uh, we had fifty-eight point nine percent last year, graduation-ready, um, versus the state fifty-four point seven. Um, and again, at the, so you can see at the, um, we're still higher for 2025, we are still higher than the state, but, um, a little bit lower than we were last year. Um, and then the graduation numbers by subgroups. So you can see the ELA is in that gray-blue turquoise kind of color and then the math is in the orange color by subgroup. So you can see that, uh, this spring in 2025, um, of our percentages of our students, uh, for Hispanic, you can see the, um, an overall ELA did much better, but seventy-nine percent, um, for ELA, thirty-seven percent for our Hispanic Latino, um, in math. And then for Asian, ninety-one percent of our Asians, um, uh, sorry, percentage of students at ninety-one percent for the Asian and seventy-eight, uh, that was in ELA and seventy-eight in math. And then for our white students, um, eighty-four percent in ELA and seventy-four percent in math. For economically disadvantaged, seventy-two percent in ELA and only thirty-eight percent in math. Our students with disabilities, um, uh, upsettingly thirty-three percent, uh, in ELA and only six percent in math. Our students with five oh fours, a hundred percent in ELA and seventy-one percent in math. And our MLL multi-language learners, thirty-six percent in ELA and nine percent in math. So some of the things that the district is doing in terms of our intervention strategies, because although our numbers, um, are about on par with the state, there's still, uh, lots of areas for growth and improvement. And like I said, we do have, um, I believe it was, uh, somewhere up to maybe thirty students, um, thirty to forty students that didn't pass. And when we have about a hundred and twenty-something kids in a class, it's a good, a good chunk. So that data is the ones of the students that took the test and, and that's how they scored on it. So, uh, some of the things that we want to, um, we're gonna continue doing, revise the ELA and math curriculum, uh, based on what was effective, uh, what needs improvement and overall alignment to the standard. So we're really gonna look at that data, um, and use it to inform Algebra I, Geometry, and Grade Ten, uh, ELA standards and curriculum. Uh, we're still working on using common language across assessments across our grade levels that reflect NJSLA and NJGPA. So I know that was an area that Michelle had talked about previously, Ms. Rodriguez, when she gave her presentation. So that's something we're still gonna continue to do is, um, make sure that we have common language across our assessments and that our language mirrors that, that would be on a state assessment. Um, and shift instructional delivery of math support to focus on filling gaps. Uh, so what we found at the high school, uh, for math particularly, is we have these math support classes, which is great, but it was more of a tutoring service than a gap-filling service, um, uh, instructional support. So we want to make sure that we really focus that math support on filling the gaps, um, as an intervention than, um, just an additional math class where they're just getting tutoring on the current stuff. And how do we really help them with giving them strategies to fill those gaps to be successful? Uh, and review and expand our multi-tiered system, uh, support systems to best identify and support varying learning needs of our students. The other test results that we got back are the ACCESS test results. So this is a state-required assessment in four skills, reading and writing, speaking and listening, for students receiving services in language instruction, uh, instructional educational programming. Um, it's mostly administered online. It's for all of our multi-language learners, um, formerly known as ESL students. Even though, um, those that have declined service must sit for the ACCESS. So it's anybody that falls in the category of being a multi-language learner, whether they, uh, receive our ESL services or not. And teachers use multiple measures, including a state-mandated cutoff score, um, to determine if students exit or remain in the program. Uh, the ACCESS proficiency is based on six levels. So Level One is entering, Level Two is emerging, Level Three is developing, Level Four is expanding, Level Five is bridging, and Level Six is reaching. So for our results, um, for our students in our Language Instructional Educational Program enrollment, so based on our, this is our enrollment. So at Irving, we have thirty-six students, uh, we had thirty-six students last year and thirty-two students this year. At Bartle, we have fifty, we had fifty-one students last year in our program and forty-five students this year. In middle school last year, we had twenty-seven ML students and at the middle school this year, we had twenty-eight students. At the high school last year, we had thirty-four students and this year, we have forty-eight students. Um, and so for the twenty twenty-five program, um, you can see just some numbers. We had, uh, overall, in general, uh, sixty-four students were in our program or in, um, learning English as a second language essentially for less than a year, uh, thirty-eight students for a year, a hundred and fifty-three students in total, um, twenty-nine plus pre-K, um, I'm sorry, twenty-nine plus, uh, pre-K students are not included and then, uh, parent refusals, um, not reflected in these numbers were seventeen. So seventeen families are not, or students are not accounted for here because they don't receive our services. So for our results, we had last year as compared to this year in the same coloring configuration, last year we had, uh, for K through twelve, thirty-five students entering on Level One last year, thirty-one this year. Last year, we had thirty, uh, in the emerging category, this year we have twenty-two. Last year, we had twenty-six developing and thirty this year. Last year, eight in expanding and now thirteen this year and in bridging, um, one and four and zero both years in reaching. So some supports and intervention to help, uh, with our multi-language learners, um, improve their test scores on ACCESS. Um, we're looking to and working on revising curriculum for beginners and newcomers from grade six to eight. So when we unpacked that data more closely, we found that there was a significant need to support, um, our beginning and newcomer, newcomer students in grade six through eight. Uh, and we're really excited. I know, um, this past year, we approved, um, Ms. Jaeger to come back to the school district. Uh, so I know the, the funding, um, over at the Reform Church kind of got cut a little bit and she was back on the job market. So unfortunately, that situation happened, but a benefit for the district because Ms. Jaeger is absolutely exceptional and doing some great things with our middle school students. So I'm really confident under her, her work with them and looking at revising our curriculum and really working with our students will be able to support our middle school learners, uh, facilitate collaboration with an instructional consultant to provide group and individualized coaching and support for our ESL teachers to strengthen instructional delivery because we heard some feedback from the teachers as well that they would like some more, um, really targeted professional development and promote collaborative planning and vertical articulation across the ESL department to ensure alignment of language goals and instruction across all grade levels. So what I'll do is maybe I'll pause there, I'll open it up to questions and then I'll go to a couple other items.
I have, I think, a quick question.
Yep.
Why would a parent refuse enrollment in the program? Seventeen is kind of high, I thought.
Um, for, um, definitely for a myriad of reasons. It could be because, um, if they, um, they have to be, they, if they go into ESL for like their English class, then they're not in a general ed classroom or they, depending on the grade level, they might have, like if it's pull-out, they don't want their children pulled out of a first-grade class to go to, um, an ESL class. So it could be for a whole, whole bunch of reasons that they, they don't want, uh, because it's all a pull-out. All of our ESL programming is a pull-out. The high school is a little bit different. Um, when it gets to the high school, it is, uh, pull-out a special course for, um, ELA. So your, um, ESL class is also your English, your ELA class, but math is not. So math goes into, what we do is a sheltered instruction training. So we try to do a lot of, uh, sheltered instruction support with our teachers so that they, the students have access and can be successful in those other classes. But sometimes parents just will refuse the services altogether.
And on the, uh, and, uh, NJGPA, all special ed students have to take that as well?
Every single student, unless they are, unless it's in their IEP, um, they're driven by their IEP, so they would take maybe the DLM, um, as an alternate.
But that can only be probably one or a couple percent, right? Is that?
Yeah, we always end up going with having to do a waiver anyway because we're over the number that they, uh, because it's a very small number. Um, not that we're extremely high, but we always have to ask for a waiver anyway.
This is just, if you think about students who are significantly disabled in those statistics, I mean, our special ed, uh, numbers are really low and that.
Yes.
There's a lot going in there, but it's also a large population of kids that are significantly disabled.
Absolutely.
High school-level test.
Absolutely. And you know, one of those things that we're, we're, you know, really hyper focusing on too is, um, is that pop, you know, all populations of students, but in particular, looking at our special ed. So we've been doing some really great work around co-teaching models, um, and that check for understanding framework, and it's been really, really successful. So we're working on, uh, bringing the co-teaching models up, um, to the middle school, uh, and the middle and high school. So hopefully those partnerships for more inclusion, um, and more of the co-teaching models should hopefully help, um, so that students, we, you know, we can find more success there, um, with them. And then as that, um, as that model expands, you know, hopefully the, the teachers that are part of the inclusion, um, professional development and the check for understanding framework, professional development can then bring that back if they were in a self-contained class. Hope, hopefully.
Yeah.
Hopefully. Hopefully. That's, that's the goal.
I'm, I'm wondering, uh, given that like pass rates in high school are fifty-eight percent like in math, knowing that students can retake it and what, whatnot, like what level do we get to by the time they finish twelfth grade generally? Do you have a sense?
Like what kind of math level or? No, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Passing level, because they can retake it.
Oh, right. So yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I'm not sure if this data reflects, like I'm not sure if our 2025 data reflects last year's, anybody who didn't finish, like if it's the, if the twenty-five, but I don't know if the 2024 data is just the spring data or if it's all-inclusive of anybody who also took it in the summer or the fall, that I don't know.
Right. I mean, I, I'm guessing just by looking at twenty-four, twenty-five that it's probably not including that, but it'd be interesting to know, given, I don't think fifty-eight percent of our students graduate, right?
Right.
Or admitted by that math, but, uh, like where we get, you know, a year later.
Right. Yeah, I, I guess we should just definitely look at that because what they do is they, they, they release the data, we send the information home and then they say you have thirty days or sixty days to share this with the board. So they don't even give us that opportunity of saying, do it in the fall after you've done this type of stuff. So I know, but it was just very interesting because we were transitioning to district testing coordinators and now under, um, Ms. Esamoah's leadership, we had to run a summer, the summer test because we thought it was important. It wasn't just a, a small handful of students that needed to take it. We were talking about a significant number. So, um, that's why we kind of scrambled, um, at the end of June to try to put something together, June and July, to put something together so that we could test a bunch of students over the summer, um, as well.
Yeah, I'd be curious how many went to the portfolio appeal versus the other types?
Well, the portfolio appeal is usually like our DEFCON five, it's like our last resort. Typically, um, in my experience, I've seen maybe the most we've ever had is like ten do the portfolio appeal, ten a year-ish, you know, uh, give or take in, in ELA or math max. Um, so we really, but this was also, you know, the options, there are a couple of other options for students to meet graduation requirements. So if they don't pass this, um, there are other avenues, um, for some other competency, NJSLA, like if they took NJSLA for, you know, Algebra, Geometry, those can qualify them, SATs, like there's other competency tests that they can take. The issue that we've had in the past is that our students opt out of our state tests. You can't opt out of this one. So, because if you opt out, then you don't have access to any of those other bullets. So you can't retake it, you can't use another test score for cutoff and you can't access the portfolio appeal. So they all have to take it. So those that don't pass it, we can look at a couple of other options. So all of that stuff, every time the students take any of those tests, SATs, NJSLA, we upload them into the student information system and then it color codes. So we can do, do a sort of a quick glance at a student to say, okay, they're green, they've met everything, they're good, we can use, uh, bullet B on slide three, which is a designated cutoff score from another substitute competency test. So they passed their, their NJSLA tests, that in the cutoff score that's required, they're good, they don't have to. But, but they, but they had to have taken those tests, but you can still opt out of those tests. So that's where, that's what we're just really trying to encourage people to do these things in the event that, you know, sometimes you just have a bad day, right?
Do we get, um, item level data for, for this test?
Yes, we get item level analysis. So, um, on slide, uh, seven, where I talked about, um, the revising the curriculum on what was effective, that's essentially what it was, like looking at like, first of all, what are the best practices, what does the research say, but also what, um, where are our students and what do they need to be successful? And that's why we want to switch that math support class to a gap-filling to really do an item analysis for our students that were like just on the cusp, right? Like what are the couple of areas that we could get them to, to close a couple gaps so that they could retake it and be successful? Um, so that's, so we're, we're working on the item analysis. Unfortunately, that doesn't come over the summer. It's like fall because, you know, everything comes in little trickles.
It'd be interesting to see if there's similar concepts for twenty-four and twenty-five to see if there's something about the kind of mainstream curriculum that kids aren't really getting.
Yeah.
And to change all instruction and then hit those concepts.
Yeah.
They're still not received.
Absolutely.
But, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, and interestingly enough, I think some, there's a lot of things happening at the state too where they're looking at things a little bit differently too. So if you saw on the board agenda tonight, um, our district improvement plan, because we did not pass CUSAC for instruction and programming because of our test scores, uh, they did an interim report and during our interim reporting, we, uh, passed now. So we are out of our district improvement plan because we hit the eighty percent, um, because they heavily weighted growth, not the passing score. So they changed their formula because what they were finding was a lot of districts were now in need of a district improvement plan because they, um, had this formula that really wasn't making sense. And now everybody was entering into these district improvement plans. Um, but because we're seeing growth, that's great. And we had our interim review meeting with the state and they said, you're, just keep on these great things that you're doing because you're having this growth. So it's just very interesting because when we talk to people from the state, they're like, well, we have to like, you're not the only one, we have to really, really think about it. Is our, it's, so they're just shifting scores, right? They're just changing scores and it's like, well, is the test valid and reliable and measuring what we want? Is it not? Is it the score that's the problem? Is it the test that's the problem? So quite honestly, I'm not sure that they know.
That's the bottom line.
But I mean, that's, I, yeah. But that's, that's where we're at with things. But yes, we, we do, we will do a deep, deep item analysis and look at, you know, maybe from last year to this year and, and see, uh, for the NJGPA, um, and the NJSLA as well. Because what would be interesting, what's interesting to me is if somebody passes, takes the ELA and math, Algebra I and Geometry, right? Passes those things but can't pass the NJGPA is also very interesting to me, right? So how many of our students fall into that category, right? So was it just a, a bad, bad timing, bad day or is that test? I don't, I don't, I don't know because I can't see the test score.
And I just have a better sense for NJSLA and like the amount of detail you get. I, I don't know if it's the same kind of step of this.
It's not.
Um, but you know, I mean, on that, you can kind of see, are they missing the more complex kind of?
Right.
Math questions. And then you can say, okay, we need to focus on two, three-step kind of word problem.
Right.
Kind of thing, right?
I think that's part of like using the common language across for those.
Right.
How to get them more ready.
Right, but yeah.
Yeah.
Have as much.
That's pretty much all we can do.
Hi Christine, I just had a question about, we're talking about intervention strategies and I guess that's slide seven, but, um, what does expanding multi-tier support systems? What would that look like?
So what we're really trying to do is look at, um, uh, the intervention at the middle and high school, uh, for tier three and then differentiated instruction for tiers one and two and the check for understanding. Um, so we're expanding the check for understanding framework that we're doing with our consultant, John Lee. Um, we're finding a tremendous amount of success with the students, with the teachers that we're working with at the middle level, especially in math six plus. Um, and what that looks like is just using data to inform your small group and small group instruction, um, instead of this just sort of like whole group, like I'm teaching everyone now, I'll do a couple of quick checks if you didn't get it, we're moving on type of way of thinking about, especially in math instruction, um, to really actually focus more on the, um, smaller group instruction, uh, for students that are in need of support, students that need enrichment, um, and then in, in between. So that's really, so like the, the differentiated instruction and data-driven instruction and then looking at how we can expand any kind of, uh, tier two or tier three, um, pull-out intervention supports, which is a very problematic at the middle school because parents don't want to give up world language or, you know, uh, any of these other, you know, theater or any of these other classes for, for it. So we're really trying to look at ways to, uh, get creative about, uh, around that idea.
Thank you. Um, so for NJGPA, the achievement gap is like very clear when you're looking at the subgroups, but specifically in math.
Yes.
And, you know, there's a, a huge, uh, difference between how the different subgroups are performing. Um, do we have, um, a comparison, um, with the subgroup data to the state data?
Oh, like how our Hispanic or Asian do across the state ones? That's a good question. I can find out. I can ask Michelle.
Um, because I mean, it's also very clear that math is a problem statewide.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I would like to know how much of a problem, you know, what, what is a Highland Park problem?
Yeah.
Versus a larger-scale problem?
Yep.
Um, that's.
Yeah, so what I'll do is I'll circle back when Michelle gets back from vacation, see if we can, if that data is accessible and I'll have her, uh, share it with curriculum and the curriculum instruction committee for August, if, if it's available.
Is there any insight as to what's going on with math kind of statewide? Why is the achieve, and I mean, this seems like it's a more recent problem on the math.
Over the past few years, actually.
Yeah, it's in the past few years.
No, but that's what I mean, like sort of.
Okay, it's been, it's been a while.
Yeah.
It's always significantly lower.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm not sure if it's just the ever since like the standards have shifted to be more intense at the lower levels. I I'm not really sure of why the trend exists. Dr. Beatty, do you have any like insight from a research perspective?
I mean, on the, not so much on the high school level, right? But yeah, since the assessments changed and we had more challenging problems, generally, the performance has lowered. It also, at that same time, everything was being put. Assessed through technology. And so that was a shift in terms of testing. At first, I think a lot of people thought it was because of that. That doesn't seem to be holding, I think, because students are getting more. Kind of accustomed to that technology. But I think they are more challenging than they were. It's not necessarily a bad thing. But I also think this is just infrastructurally across New Jersey. As much as we do education well, I think across the state. There is no infrastructure for improving math instruction in the state.
Right.
There just isn't. The resource, we have resources, but we don't actually have people providing. Instructional support in math that's really, really solid. There's a few things where people rely on textbook companies, which are in a horrible way to kind of rely. And so I don't know that we're seeing instruction really improve around more challenging kind of mathematics. People are buying new curriculum. That's not working. That has never really worked, but. I mean, generally, it doesn't work generally, right? If you have specific. Supports in place, long-term professional element, that kind of thing you can do, but then who are you going to go to in the state for a long-term professional element? I mean. I'm booked.
Oh, one of the other things the state said is that they are in a, working on a new RFP for a new testing platform company. I guess Pearson is out. And I don't know if that means it's going to be new questions or a new. So they also said that they go, oh, we're in the process of negotiating for a new testing something. So I'm like, oh.
That's great because it's just another adjustment.
Right. So I'm like, I don't even know, but I don't know what they won't tell us what it means. Like, so does it mean the test questions are different or? But honestly, the same thing around science. We've had the same thing where, you know, they make, the 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 science test questions are fantastic. They align to the standards, but our teaching. Hasn't necessarily shifted in that way. You know, around it because to to Dan's point, it does require a lot of, you know, instructional help and coaching. When I started in the district, one of the things I was. Amazed by was that at the elementary level, all the teachers were self-proclaimed literacy experts. And like all these elementary teachers were so fearful of math instruction. I'm like, who's my math expert? Who are my math people? Crickets, like nobody. And so once we started that professional development, if you remember, you know, the the sort of hype and excitement around conquer math to learn those best practices. All of a sudden, teachers were having their own aha moments around math instruction and we were starting to garner, you know, that. That input and that buy-in and to start seeing a shift around math instruction from concrete iconic to symbolic and and that work that we were doing. That professional development is expensive, you know, you have to sustain it, you know, do we, you know, like. Do you have, you know, somebody in house that could coach or help help in that way? You know, we started doing work on, you know, complex instruction and tasks. You know, when you have changeover with teachers or we shift grade levels because we have to close a grade here and open a new grade here, you know, it. All those things kind of compound. As well. So I think there's a sort of a whole bunch of reasons, at least locally. I don't know about at the state level.
I think those are the same issues that people are facing across the state, honestly. And I, you know. I think the idea too was if you, well, the idea, it was at the time when Common Course came out and you change the standard, you change the assessment. It was much more assessment-driven kind of change than instructional change. And to be honest, we haven't seen that. Right?
Any other questions?
Not a question, just a comment. It was, I think that you can definitely see in the access scores. How the students are kind of moving up and progressing through the continuum. So that was nice to see.
Yeah.
I'll say something positive.
That was, that's good. Yep. All right. So I will just shift gears a little bit. Nothing formal that I have in terms of a presentation, but I wanted to share some updates. I had a. Fantastic meeting on Friday with Champions. So Nee Dang and Jessica Hanat are. The two people that are coordinating our transition with Champions. One of the reasons for an important meeting on Friday was to give them all the subsidy information that we had. So we're really up against the deadline. If you saw what came out from the state, essentially based on some budget line items after July thirty first, they're not accepting any new subsidy applications. And so when I looked across our paperwork to see where we were at, I couldn't make heads or tails of it. Because I wasn't involved in the process. I don't, so I don't know. And when I look through a binder or I look through files, I don't know where things are in the process. And when I look on the childcare subsidy website, it's less than helpful on trying to figure out. If the families applied, where are they in the process? Because it's all confidential. And what we discovered was parents have to actually give permission to the district to receive information. On where they're at in the process. So all that to say, I'm sitting here with a binder and files filled with subsidy applications that I can't make heads or tails of. And so instead of spinning and spiraling and figuring it out, they have full-time people and that was part of the the attraction to Champions. So. I had a kickoff meeting with them and I gave them all of our stuff. And I said, please, if you can figure out how to contact these families. And just see where they are in the process and help them along for anybody that needs it. So they were already fielding inquiries. From our families. So I know some of our families were already reaching out in lights after they, especially after my text and email went out. And then they were, they were going to call each family that had the application in the binder or the. In the file folders to see where they were at and how we could assist, how Champions could assist them in finishing an application. And in addition, making sure if anybody was near the sort of term of theirs to sort of reapply as well, so that they were grandfathered. They were grandfathered in. So that was the the crux of the meeting. It was fantastic. I did give them a little history of our program. Which I thought would have helpful to them. They did give me flyers, so we pushed out the Indeed. Portal for their hiring. So they're hiring what they call teachers or what we would call our site assistants and a director. For each location, which were our site managers. So they posted for teachers and directors for our program and they said they had a lot of applicants already. We pushed out the links to our staff to encourage them to apply and gave them direct contact information. So if they had very specific questions. Because I couldn't answer how much they'd be making or I couldn't, there were some questions like, how much training do I need to have? When does all of that start? Those kinds of questions I couldn't answer for the staff, but Jessica and Nee have been amazing with our with our staff. They also said that once they have their interview process done, they were just going to run that list by us. To let us know if they were, I said, you know, we do have some staff that maybe not have been in good standing toward the end of their term with us. So I wanted to review. To make sure, but also I said, you know, depending on where, what that looked like. You know, my recommendation to them was if they could hire site. Directors that maybe weren't affiliated with our staff during the day, that might be helpful because I was, I wondered to what degree. If our site managers struggled with sort of maintaining our staff. In 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 certain ways because they're their peers during the day, right? So how do you, because there was, if you read the job descriptions for our site managers. There was making managing their staff, right? They were like the first line of like a middle management type of position. So. You know, I wonder. So I said, maybe some of our staff might be, work better or differently. With people that aren't like their peers during the day. I mean, I don't know. So I said, you know, I'm I'm not sure how. You know, I I trust their vetting process, but we would review them and let them know if there was any that were of grave concern. That would be sort of our no-fly. Our no-fly list. Other than that, we were excited for the list. So they'll be sharing that shortly. So I know that they were. Feurishly working on hiring. They had a couple of people to be our site directors, which was great. And that they are feverishly working on the subsidy, which I told them was like the of critical importance for our for our families. So great overall meeting. They posted, I know we pushed pushed out flyers for people to enroll. So hopefully they'll have some updates on, you know, enrollment and things like that. They're also meeting with each of the principals and some staff to. Just get a lay of the land of the buildings and also get a list of things, events that are not on our district calendar that they can attend. So they want to do a Champions kickoff. Just district-wide for anybody to come, not just if you enroll, to learn about their program. And to get to know the needs and and stuff like that. I believe they were going to reach out to the arts in the park and set up a booth there. They'd like to come to our back-to-school nights, parent conferences, if I know preschool and kindergarten usually has like a. Back-to-school thing before, you know, their orientation, sixth grade has an orientation. So they're reaching out to the admins to get those lists so they can be a presence there as well. So that was the crux of Champions. So I'm excited about that transition. And then the other is, I think we're in a good place for our out-of-state overnight field trips. The analysis was really challenging. And I actually don't even think I would have full numbers to give out because. It's not really comprehensive because it's a moving target. What we found were some people, some of, some groups were going on trips. Not using district funds, others were, some that were approved for some, but never submitted time sheets for stuff. So we have sort of like a proposed amount and then an actual amount. And it was, and several different funding sources. So it was really. And that will be shared with each of the committee meetings this month to kind of look at that analysis and and see where we are. Plus, I also put in the analysis, the number of students that actually went on the trip. So the the analysis was deep. So for example, a trip that, you know, for a an organization that had a hundred and something students, only eighteen. Went on a trip, you know, that cost the operating budget, like, you know, X amount of thousands of dollars. So like, just kind of a. Analysis of what we could get, although it's not fully comprehensive. Because we just kind of hit hit a roadblock and we could go on and on with a deep dive in analysis, but the extent of which the proposal. Will be shared with members of the staff, middle and high school staff, mostly high school because they're the ones that take most of the. The trips. So I have a bunch of staff coming in this week on a Zoom or in person with me. They can do a hybrid. To come and give feedback on my proposal, which would be for the district operating budget to cover the cost of the the per diem. Overnight costs. So for our teachers, it's ninety dollars a night. And for admins, it's three hundred dollars a night. And then the nurse varies. There's, whether we use a district-wide nurse, there's two rates for if it's a. Half-day or full day and then or a. Contracture, contracted, contractor nurse and then the substitute costs. So if we have teachers going on those sub-costs. Nursing, you know, sub-costs and stuff like that, that would be under the operating budget. And then student funds would pick up all the other incidentals. So. As you could see on the analysis, it would be the chaperone administrator, nurses, room accommodations, hotel, transportation, flight. Meals, those kinds of expenditures. As insurance, if an insurance rider was needed, they would pick that up. So there would be. A bunch of stuff that would be under the student funds and student-paid model. There were a couple of the things that we found in the process too, that we're going to clean up internally, just in terms of the form. So when you see the the board attachment, we're going to streamline. The language because we found we're like, one says district, one says school funds, one says student funds. With school funds, student funds, with school funds, school funds, district funds, board funds. So it was breadcrumb trails we're trying to follow. We weren't exactly conclusive sometimes on where the money was was going or how it was funded. Any other incidentals too, DECA paid for some chaperones to go to, the district funds paid for chaperones to go to Disney, for example, as a fun day for the kids in the park. That would be under student funds. So if this, if they were going to like, let's say, a museum or an amusement park or something like that. The student funds would have to pay for the chaperones. And then the other piece that we were considering was for all trips. To come to us by December first of the following year. So this year we'll be able to fund it, not a problem. We'll we'll. Figure out how to how to fund it. But moving forward, anything then moving forward would be to my office by December first, all proposals. That way we can budget for that. So we would budget worst-case scenario, right? How many teachers would need to go? An administrator, a nurse. Sub-costs, then we can put that in the operational budget. So when you go approve the budget, you know how much is earmarked for those trips for next year. That way there's access for anybody that wants to go. So if the Asian Culture Club would like to go somewhere, the chess club would like to go somewhere. Everybody has the opportunity to submit that. We can budget for those trips and then they can go on the trips, you know, start fundraising around that to go the following year. So that way there aren't any surprises and we don't have to say, well, I'm sorry, well, we can't find your trip because we didn't budget for it. That way there's this opportunity for everybody to have access and we can lay that in and there's no surprises. So. It's just kind of shifting the way internally we we do our processes. But I mean, a year and and change out, most people know. I do know that DECA. Posts their stuff more than a year, two years in advance, Model UN does. You know, the the choir trips and stuff like that. A lot of those are are posted pretty far, pretty far in advance. So I think that will be okay. The other thing that I'm exploring, I have a call in, hopefully the end of this week or early next week with the travel agency. So we actually did find in our analysis. Is that we have used travel agencies in the past. So when we looked at some of the purchase orders, we have paid travel agencies in the past and. So that's good news because I know there was some concern that if we did, it wasn't going to be their trip. So the good news is we have and it hasn't infected any anything. When I reached out to one particular travel tour, they've actually worked with Highland Park in the past and they do DECA trips, Model UN trips, senior trips. All types of trips and what they, what the conversation with them is going to be is, you know, if they do those things, if they were to able to support. Purchasing the the tickets for DECA, the flights, the whatever, and helping them manage that, for example. They might be able to get a better deal on things theoretically, because if they are doing other schools' DECA trips to the same. Because everyone's going to the same location for those international and those those trips. So that was the conversation, those, some of these travel agencies have. Agreements with with these places to get better deals. So I'm not there yet with that, but I have some calls out. You know, in the next couple of days and weeks to sort of explore maybe board-approved travel agencies as well. So all of that will be reviewed this week with some staff. To get some input in the process and then hopefully, you know, we'll be able to lock, lock that up at some coming curriculum meetings and then we'll be able to put out a communication. You know, hopefully no later than, you know, beginning to mid-August. On what that process will look like and then everyone can submit for this coming year and then we'll start the new cycle, you know. Moving forward if if it's something that we can all support. I think that's it. So I'll open it up for those two, Champions and Field Trips, for questions or comments.
Just had a clarification on our after-school staffing. We did put in the RFP that our current or our staff for our program has first writer for few.
Correct.
If they are in good standing, including our directors, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But what, let me clarify that too, because Champions, because they service a couple of their school districts as well, they're open to if our staff would also like opportunities in other districts.
Yeah. That's interesting. I didn't even think about.
Local, local other districts.
And on the Champions, on the subsidy, because I know that that's been. You know, a cause for concern for us on the board, but also to families in the district because that's a, I mean, that's a huge hit. I did just want to clear, I did a little digging to find out what happened because as far as I know, there was no cut in the state budget to. Childcare assistance programs and and there wasn't. The childcare assistance program is funded at the level that was requested. This is the cutting the, not taking any new family, children into the subsidy program. Has to do with expected impacts to the state budget from the big beautiful bill. And the impacts that are going to come to services that while. The childcare assistance program was not specifically impacted, they're looking at the larger impacts and so. They didn't think that it was economic. Financially feasible to continue, you know, bringing new kids into the program. And so this is, I think, deeply concerning and also just, you know, the first. In some of the impacts that we're likely to see moving forward.
Do you, do you get any a sense of that that could potentially change? No.
So I don't, I don't know, but I mean, the impacts to the. But I, I mean, the impacts to the state budget of the big beautiful bill just on services, you're talking about $360 million now and, you know, more as things progress. So, you know, I just don't know.
Christina, thanks, thanks for all that work. And I know it's ongoing, looking at the field trip situation. So if I understand you correctly, this coming year, it sounds, whatever new system is developed, won't be put into place, won't be put into place for this year. It'll be for the 2026, 27 school year. So did I hear that the, the major field trips that the district is used to having will go on as they have gone on before? And then, yeah, so go ahead.
They will, it'll just, the funding model will be starting immediately.
Right.
The future budgeting of them will start like December 1st for the following year. So anybody that would like to submit field trips for this year, we'll do that. And we'll figure out where we need to, we'll figure it out. We'll figure out how to fund it, but we're going to fund it under the district funding part of it, which would be the per diem chaperone rate, administrative rate and nurse rate and sub costs. So what the staff that want to have their field trips approved this year, under how much the funding model will be, will be to figure out then if I need X amount of chaperones, an administrator, if I need a nurse. And then whatever, like that would be into the student paid model. Then what we're, and then that way, when they're submitted, we'll, we'll finagle, figure out how to fund those from an operating budget. And then what we'll do is then anybody, you know, again, submitted December 1st, that way we can budget and we don't have to figure out where to find the money and cut somewhere this year to make it work. We could just build it in and we know we have that money to, to be safe for us.
Okay, great. So now that we know that there's no ban this coming year on
Correct.
out of state field trips and the district needed a pause, we've taken it. How big a difference do you think this new funding model will be compared to what people are used to? Like, will there be a big adjustment?
I've worked out those numbers, actually. I wanted to bring that up tonight. I've worked out those numbers. It's actually not, most of them aren't as bad as I thought they were going to be. So I, I wanted to also thank you both for your work on this. It was very detailed and definitely check my math. And the insurance rider is the one unknown. I don't know how much something like that runs. But I did run a few things by you, just to see if I'm right. Like Model UN, for example, the trip to Mexico, it was $888. If we, under the new funding model, it would be only $60 more per family to cover.
Right, well, so, because Model, here's the thing though. Model UN does a tremendous job of fundraising. So they host an event here, that's a fundraising event where schools pay to compete locally. Model UN, the organization does a lot for students, especially our students that are economically disadvantaged. I would be cautious. I'm not going to put out a number because I don't know how much that trip actually costs. Because some members of the organization don't submit all their receipts to us. Which means that they may pick up the cost personally, which is great. I love that. Thank you. That would be great. However, if those staff leave and new staff come in and don't want to pick things up personally, like we have to fund, we have to fund for that. One of the things I noticed, for example, was like the trip, the estimated cost that you see on the field trip form, right? And then there's what actually hits our, hits our books. Sometimes they're two different things because they fundraise more, right? Or less students go, so it's more expensive. Or some people just don't submit for their reimbursement. And that's problematic. That's why I can't put a number on it, because that's an example of staff that never submitted for reimbursement. Now, was it because Model UN picked up their tickets and it never hit our books? Was it their personal bank accounts? I, I don't know. I'm telling you, when I tell you it was a moving target, it's still a moving target. I mean, we, my office was calling our, our advisors, how did you pay for this? Where did it come from? Who paid for it? You know, because we were just trying to figure that out. So I just, I just proceed with caution. It's going to, it's not going to be extraordinarily more. But I don't know, because not everybody submits their receipts.
It seemed, I thought it was going to be extraordinarily more and it seemed like maybe it won't be. Although one of the trips would be extraordinarily more that's on there. So should I not talk?
Well, that's because, that's, that's also because of the numbers too, right? So when they're sitting there, and that's what I looked at it going, okay, if I have 120 kids that are in DECA, which is fantastic, but 18 are going on the trip, right? And so that, now things become more expensive when you're dividing up a total of a trip for 18 kids versus 100 kids, depending on what it is, right? But although you need more chaperones, but you still need to pay for those things, you know? That, these trips are great. Do the students need to spend an extra day to go to Disney? I mean, I would say yes, because I love Disney and I love that our students are getting the experience. But if you've been to Disney at all, I mean, recently, it's extraordinarily expensive to go, you know? And now they, you know, paying for the chaperones and things like that. So part of it is, is, and when you're splitting that cost amongst 18 students, those things can be more challenging. Now, again, that number changes every year for the number of students who qualify. So how do you predict those things? So, and even, I was actually kind of shocked too. The number of students that participate in DECA, not all of them end up going to Atlantic City either, right? And so is that because it's, is it expensive? Are students not going because it's cost prohibitive? Are students not going because they don't qualify? Although I'm not sure, I really don't know how it works. Or are parents and guardians not letting them because they don't want to miss school? Like, there could be a whole bunch of options why students aren't going also. So, yeah, so some of them might be more expensive. But from what I heard, the feedback that I received from, from students was, you know, we'll fundraise more, we'll fundraise more, we'll fundraise more. So, because they really want to go those trips and we really want to support that. But that's why that number is a moving target and it's hard from a budget perspective to, to do that when we've set a budget and now people are submitting for these great trips, but we can afford to support them all. So under this model, at least we could support anybody that wants to take an overnight out of school, out of state field trip.
I just thought it would be nice for them to have an idea of how much they may have to fundraise, you know?
Well, I think they, when they, right.
It's going to be a thousand dollars more per kid, so.
But it also depends on where they, it also depends on where they go, right? In the, if you look at the analysis, the trip to Orlando.
Every year.
But it changes every year. Anaheim, California is different from Orlando. The Model UN going to Washington is cheaper than Mexico, right? Taking a couple of, one coach bus to go down or two coach buses to go down to Washington is cheaper than flights out of the country. And they don't need the rider. So, you know, that's, when you looked at like a cost of like the Hershey trip, you know, a Hershey or, or Boston, which I don't even know the all in because our coke, so music is co-curricular, because we have those classes. We don't have a Model UN or DECA or chests or, you know, those kinds of, we don't have those as classes. But those co-curriculars, like they didn't even submit. So I don't even know how much even the all in cost was, because they didn't even submit stuff to hit the budget, because we didn't budget for those trips. So these people were doing this out of the kindness of their hearts and wallets, which isn't fair to them either. Especially when some people can take a trip and get district support and other people take a trip and don't get district support. So, right, so I mean, it depends on, on where they go, but they would know that. So if I'm submitting my request in December, I have an idea of where I'm going and I have a general idea of how much that's going to cost. Especially if I'm working with a travel agency that can lock us into something, right? It's like when you go and you book your ticket online and you're like, I'm going to lock in at this rate, I'm going to get this, like, that's important. So once they have that idea of where they're going, they can get a general sense of how much they would need to fundraise to make the cost more affordable.
So the per student cost isn't necessarily, you know, the, the ticket price, the, it's what they ended up having to pay. So it could be already minus some fundraising or minus, you know, CDs or minus some whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it seemed like that was the cost. I don't know what the, you know, we had.
So it was, so it was like, there was like the, the predicted cost and then the actual cost. And so the actual cost was, I guess, minus whatever they fundraised and stuff like that. And as you can see, some groups, I guess, fundraised more or maybe the trip is less.
How much was fundraised?
We don't know.
Okay.
Because student funds is a whole nother, that's, that student funds isn't even actually managed in our budgetary software system. It's managed on QuickBooks, which is a, a legacy. So it's not even the online version, it's a legacy version of QuickBooks. So it goes on a laptop to the person who manages student funds in each of the buildings. So we have a Schedule B for four people to manage student funds. So then we'd have to go into those QuickBooks to find out. Right, so I mean, at some point, we had to cut and say, here's where we, here's where we landed. Here is my proposal. We could go much, much deeper, but it's just going to take more time. And I don't want to delay when we, I think we have a model that can be sustained. And that, yes, is it going to be more expensive for the students? Yes, I'm not, I wouldn't, I'd be lying to say it's going to be cheaper. I'm, that's why I'm trying to explore other avenues, so that if we can have some companies that we're working with that can help maybe through their connections, get things relatively cheaper or more affordable for our families. Like we, you know, it's something to explore. It doesn't mean that they have to use a board approved travel agency, but it's good to have that there so that they can explore it. Since they, we already saw purchase orders that they do. So we've already saw that through DECA was one, one group that already was using a travel agency to book their trip to Anaheim. So there, and there's probably a reason for that. So it's just kind of like digging a little bit deeper into that, you know? And unfortunately, I mean, we're in, if we want our students to have these great experiences and we want it to be open for all groups to have these experiences, unfortunately, students are just going to have to fundraise more or pay a little bit more money. The district operating budget can only handle so much. And especially if, if we just don't know how much things would cost, it's really hard to predict on our end.
I, I really like this, this, this proposed new policy of having proposals for field trips or requests, however you want to term it, due nine months before they would take place. It seems to make so much sense. And I think one of the board's concerns was that, well, one of your concerns, and shared by many on the board, was that there was a lack of equity, because groups that typically didn't take field trips, they didn't know what they should do to apply for it, right? So this will give us the chance to see the, you know, the, all the different proposals and the, how big a difference will this new system be compared to the kind of, it seems like sort of ad hoc way it's been done before?
I, I think the biggest difference is just going to be the timing, that they just have to get those, their submission requests, you know, ahead of the, during the budget season. I think that would be the only difference versus them just submitting them sort of as they go. But a lot of them are like a year in advance anyway. So I, that's, I didn't see it to be too much of a concern. I think it's just sort of that deadline of that reminder. And we can put out, you know, reminders, you know, the, the principals can put that in their, their weekly reminders to staff. Don't forget to put your, you know, proposals in, you know, for any, any trips and stuff like that. So we'll definitely do a lot of communication around this and to remind the staff to get their proposals in. And, you know, if, and if the, the deadline comes and we're starting to make budget, I'm like, huh. Usually the choir trip always takes a trip and they didn't submit, you know, we'll reach out to Ms. Hodge and say, hey, we saw that you didn't submit, you normally do. Are you going to do that, you know, to, just to make sure? And that way during the budget season, you would get that list ahead of time too, so you know what you're funding for the upcoming year. So I think the biggest shift is just that deadline. But I mean, board deadlines aren't anything that's new to them, so. All right, thank you. That concludes my report.
We will proceed to public comment. Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation, has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policy Number 0167 establishes and regulates the right of the public to participate in public meetings. We have nobody in person, not nobody, but. I don't think anyone should speak, Lori, but Angelo, how many people do we have on Zoom? Okay, if anybody on Zoom has a public comment, please raise your hand. Okay, and with no hands raised, we will close public comment. We're going to move on to Board Committee Reports and Recommendations, Curriculum Instruction.
Curriculum Instruction was not able to meet. We are meeting this Thursday. So there's nothing to report on our meeting. We do have a number of items to vote on. First is to approve field trips. One is actually a walking tour with students in Irving. We have one HIB report to, that was confirmed to approve. We have approval of curriculum textbooks mandated programs for pre-K 12. Approval of HPA professional element offerings. A lot of these are technology related, as well as trauma informed care. We have approval of Violence Awareness Month presentation, approval of evaluation instrument for the athletics programs and sports medicine administrator. Approval of a service agreement with JAG Athletic Training. Approval of Highland Park Athletics Emergency Action Plan related, heat related illness and sudden cardiac arrest. Approval of an athletics emergency action plan across both middle school and high school. Approval of university graduate students in internships and practicum. Approval of a sidebar agreement between the Board of Ed and HPEA. Approval of some job descriptions. A lot of these are athletics related. Some are also for lighting and stage technicians. And approval of an interim review of director's progress of the NJ Qualities Single Accountability Continuum. This is due to our student achievement growth with NJ DOE. Submitted our interim DIP. And so this is actually good news in that our, our growth has actually been submitted in terms of our accountability.
And, thank you, Dan. I have a question. I, well, really just a clarification. The job descriptions, these are all jobs that we currently have in our athletics department, correct?
Yes.
It's just that we're cleaning up the job descriptions or creating them.
Creating them.
Creating the job descriptions. Yeah. So we're not adding 10 athletic positions. These are positions that are already, you know, hired for and filled every year. It's just that the jobs didn't really have descriptions attached to them, so.
Correct, nor did we ever figure out really like the rates. So I was working with the union president, Mr. Presti, really in the winter, the spring, Ms. DeRosa and I. And we're like, oh, we have these sort of miscellaneous rates of pay and these jobs that kind of exist out the ethos. And we don't really have descriptions for them. We're not really sure how the rates of pay came about. So Mr. Presti and Ms. DeRosa and I have really been working to clean all that up. So Mr. Presti actually had started the job descriptions for a bunch of these things. And then when the new administrator started was just kind of picking, picking all that up. And that way we can really fine tune those and, and make sure that everyone is supported, that it understands that this is, if you're accepting to do this for an extra amount of pay, this is the requirements. And does the money match the job description and all that kind of stuff? The tech, the tech jobs are actually for lighting and sound for external groups that pay a fee to use our facilities. Our auditor, our, our auditorium gets rented out frequently. It's a beautiful facility and a lot of organizations like to rent it out and they pay us a rental fee for that. And oftentimes they want some particular lighting or sound. What we found over the years was sometimes some of their requests were a lot. For example, we may sometimes have groups that need really specific lighting design. Like they want intense lighting design for these dance numbers and things like that, which is more than just kind of coming in and turning on a spotlight and lights on and off and playing music. So, you know, that was something that we kind of worked over the years to kind of fine tune so that our staff felt supported, that it was worth their while to, to do it. And it was a little revenue stream for us as, as well. So, you know, if they rent out the facility and we're able to provide some lighting and, and sound support, then we can kind of get a little revenue from renting out the auditorium.
Thank you.
So that's actually was my question. So this is not, that the tech part of this is not for our high school musical?
No, no. So we have our, our events are all in-house. We have a Schedule B position, which is Tech Crew Advisor. And that person, I actually believe it's Mr. Presti that we approved, works with our students and trains them on our lighting and sound. And so they do our, if you've been to our musicals, it's our students that are behind the boards, operating and working under, under that leadership. And then if there are events that happen, you know, middle school moving up ceremony or things like that, our students, you know, can volunteer and like at release time from their classes or something like that to come to support that or, you know, some sort of event that's happening. But it's just those external groups that come. We have to. Um, we have to pay somebody to do that and so they pick up that, that cost.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Monique.
Nothing to report. We also did push our monthly meeting back to next Wednesday.
And financing facilities.
One minute, I had it open. Uh, we did meet, it was really just myself with, um, Dr. Suska and Mr. Rosa and John Flanagan joined us. See what we did. So we have the action items. Uh, we discussed some of them. I'll go over the agenda, uh, items in a, in a minute. So the things we talked about were, um, the state has increased the bid threshold, uh, the threshold for bids. So we, we have on the agenda to increase that from $44,000 to $53,000. Um, we got our IDA grant allocation, which was similar to last year, but, um, we were decreased by 14, that was more than $14,000 on our IDA grants. We have not yet, I just checked, we have not yet gotten our title funding for this year. So that is a concern, obviously. We typically, I understand, get that at the end of June, beginning July, we're still waiting, um, hopefully. So that's, nothing on that to report. Um, on the agenda for facilities is, uh, an annual, uh, renewal application for our, um, multiple temporary instructional spaces, our, uh, our, our, at Irving, the modular classrooms at Irving, that we're required to renew that application every year. We discussed, uh, the, um, briefly, the, the, uh, the two policies that are now up for second read related to electronic communication. And the only new thing on there that we talked about was, um, how that will be implemented. Um, and, uh, the conversation was about, um, the middle school would like to try the Yonder Patches, which could come at a cost of about $12,000. Um, and whether we have insurance for that or students pay, there was just kind of general conversation, no decisions made. Let me just go see what else. We also discussed the overnight field trips, but that's already been discussed, so I'm not gonna, um. We were, we reviewed the financials for the after-school program and that's consistently, um, the amount that, uh, we are the negative on that stays consist, stayed consistent through the end of the year. Yeah, the field trip stuff we talked about, I'm looking to do that. We, at that point, we had auditors working in the district. They'll be back again in September. They were encouraged that we decided to outsource the after-school program because obviously that was a, a source of concern for our finances. And under facilities, um, the baseball field, at that point, new fencing was up. Footing has been poured for the dugouts. Um, the pitching mounds were done, home and away. Some conversation about how bleachers have been moved. They may be moved again to continue to improve the view. The Bartle structural repairs are underway and a lot of progress has been made on that. Um, they were, demolition was started and old boilers are being taken out. There's a concern there for asbestos in that area, in the area of actually the business office area. Um, and that's going to need to be remediated. The same company that's doing the Bartle structural work is also doing the Bartle bathroom. Um, and they are, have removed the fixtures and ceiling. There's asbestos there as well, so their remediation for both areas is going to be done at the same time. Um, and obviously we want it all done before school starts, at least the, uh, that part of it. Um, the greenhouse is going back out to bid. Um, still concerned about getting it in under the amount of money that we have to do that project. John's trying to be very creative in how that gets budgeted, but that's still a work in progress. Um, and the last thing he mentioned was a New Jersey water grant to replace some of the water fountains in Irving that have been closed due to finding, uh, lead in the pipes. There's a couple of options that are being worked on for that. Uh, that was our discussion for agenda items. As we do every month, we have, um, the bill list. This is, uh, from June 24th to July 28th, an amount of $4,994,802 for their bills. We have approval of the, um, Treasurer's Report as of June 30th and the Board Secretary's Report also as of June 30th. The certifications, as we always do, uh, for the end of June 30th to, um, uh, to confirm that to the best of our knowledge, no major account or fund has been over-expended. Um, and there's sufficient funds to meet the district's financial applications. There's board, there's budget transfers to approve. Number six is that, what I was talking about, that big threshold that is being increased per the state's change. Seven is the IDA grant, accepting the IDA grant, uh, application, um. Yeah. And travel expenses are on there. We have some contractors for professional development. Uh, some of this is for the beginning of the school year. Uh, and some of it's going on over the summer for inclusive education training for staff. And what, uh, Dr. Suska had been talking about earlier about, uh, continuing on the co-teaching by design. Irving all the way through high school is involved in that. And some training for district school counselors on 504 compliance and best practices, some health professional development. And then going on, we have the, uh, membership in the New Jersey Inter-Scholastic Athletic Association. We need to approve, um, that, uh, for our modular classrooms, approve renewal of the application. There's number 12 is approval to dispose of a public address system, I guess, that, that was replaced at Irving and we have to approve that it's going to be disposed of. There is, last one for me is a read-in, it's number 13. It's approval of Level the Playing Field Grant. Um, and that is, um, a grant for new and gently-used sports equipment to support district athletic programs. So it sounds like a place where we can go and actually get some, a good equipment for no cost to us because it's a grant. So that is, uh, my report. If there's any questions?
I have one question.
Sure.
Is there a reason the middle school wanted to use the Yonder Patches rather than the lockers? Or another option? I'm just thinking about, you know, damaging them and having costs and that kind of stuff, you know, versus something that sits in a classroom and students aren't responsible for.
Yeah, they, because they have, um, they don't have like, um, the same teacher all day to go in and like a homeroom in the morning and then go back to that classroom at night would be a scheduling situation that they really couldn't figure out. So it would be harder to, um, need probably much more staff support financially to have them in like locked boxes and then have a lineup, open up the box and then hand, this is your watch, this is your phone, this is your whatever, at the end of the day, to try to move that versus, um, that they can just stand there with the little things and go, blink, 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 and, and push them out. So it was more of a, thinking about it through like logistically, it seemed a little bit, a little bit easier. Yonder also provides with that about $12,000. They call it policy support, but it's actually procedural support. So it's like kind of professional development around it. So they provide that for, they come in and kind of talk and they go through like best use, how to manage them, how to maintain them, how to work around them, um, how to help support students with it. Um, and think about procedures in terms of using it as well to help the staff kind of think through, um, how their day could look with that. So that was kind of beneficial. The, um, idea of the boxes, they, they thought would be too problematic, um, to try to figure out like logistically. But they did consider it.
Yeah, but there is the issue of how you replace them when they get lost or damaged or so forth. Like there's, if parents paid for insurance on Chromebook, Chromebooks.
Chromebook.
So we do go to that model or, or not.
Yeah, they do, it does come with, um, I don't, I don't know the, I'm not going to say the number because I don't want to be quoted, I don't want to be quoted, but it does come with some extras. So that number does come with, um, with some spares, uh, that.
Paid extras, yeah.
So, I won't, paid extras, so we are paying for some extras. Um, but you know, again, what, what that looks like in terms of, you know, um, you know, uh, I would encourage and I'm going to encourage the middle school to like sort of maybe lean on, um, maybe, you know, pathways at, or the middle schools at New Brunswick that are using them, some other local districts and the company to kind of talk about what are some, you know, what is the rate of, um, replacement that's happening? How do they handle that, that kind of thing? Um, so maybe we can, we could see what's working in other districts and piggyback on that.
Are the pouches going to go home with kids or are the pouches going to be left at school?
The pouches would go home with the students.
Then they'd have to remember to bring them back.
And they have to remember to bring them back. So same thing like the Chromebooks, so they get the Chromebooks, um, they, with them.
They want, so they, or they maybe they're more desirable than Dr. Pouch.
Well, listen, if anybody needs a moneymaker out there, create a Chromebook pouch that is also a Yonder pouch, so that they can put everything in one centralized location, you know? There's a, if anybody needs a money-making, uh, prototype, I'll have the, I'll have the Makerspace prototype around that for me.
So is there a plan for, for students who do actually lose the pouches?
I don't know the specific details of that. Um, my guess is that I probably get more information in August. Um, our assistant, our assistant principals are 11-month, um, so once Dr. Richardson comes back, uh, starting August 1st, I'm sure I'll get some more communication about that. July is a quiet month in the buildings.
Was there a discussion on if kids bring in, you know, the burner phone to put in the Yonder pouch, but then really have their real phone that they're using?
Yeah, so in the, so in the regulation, it does, um, show specifically the, um, tiered, uh, level of disciplinary action that would have to and support that would take place. So for each building, if you go to the regulation, um, it's very clear for that. So if they put something in there and then have something on them, there is depending on the, this, the grade level. The Bartle, um, in Irving were one Bartle, uh, but Bartle Irving and then middle and then high school had different levels of that. Um, so they would be, you know.
How does enforcing that differ from just only doing that? You know, only having the discipline if the kids take their phones out? So we're paying for a pouch. They end up putting a burner phone in their pouch. They use another phone, now there's progressive discipline that happens.
Right, right. It would be no difference if they didn't have the pouch and they took it out and used it. But hopefully the pouch will be able to help them self-monitor and that they realize if they, um, bring the burner phone and they get it, we, well, they put the burner phone in, take the real phone, now we have the real phone, so we take it. So they can't have it anymore. And then if, you know, again, depending on, you know, one of the, you know, one of them was like their parents have to come get it and, and things like that. So, you know, we're hoping that, again, we'll review the data, um, you know, as, as we go through to see how much disciplinary action is, is happening around this. Um, like I said, we'll, we'll try to get it all, but they have to put their, their watches, unless it's the only way they can have it on them is if it's in their IP or 504 that, that they require, um, their watch or their phone or something like that per their IP or 504 or IHP or their health plan, um, but, so.
And one other question, what if they do like either lose it or leave it at home? Will we have loners for them the next day, like these extra?
Yes, that would be the same thing that they would have to come and get, and get their loner and, and stuff like that. My guess would be the loner would be the same thing. They get it, they put it in, it gets locked, at the end of the day, they unlock it and give us the loner back.
I was just reading something today about, um, school districts that have adopted the pouches. Parents are calling and being like, can we use these at home? So, so get, get ready for that.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify, if it's a pouch, you throw it in there and then it's locked by something. It's like they can't just open it up whenever they.
It's locked by a magnet, they can't open, they have to actually go and tap it to this magnet to have it be released. If you've gone to any, um, a lot of, um, comedians and stuff like that are using it now. Like if you go to watch a Kevin Hart show, for example, I only know because I have experience. If you go to a Kevin Hart, uh, comedy show, you actually have to put your phones and devices in there and then you walk out and you unlock it and then you drop it like, you know, putting your little 3D glasses at the end of a movie into the little bin at the end because they don't want you videotaping or putting anything up there. So it's actually becoming a, an interesting trend in the entertainment business. Um, but it would be the, the same here. So I've seen, um, the, the unlocking devices is this, you know, round thing and they just go ding, ding, ding and unlocks and they.
And to be honest, uh, when I had to do that when I went to see something on Broadway last year, I had to put it in the little pouch and I was like, oh, this is really nice because I'm not tempted to.
So I guess if, if it becomes, if, if parents are, would like this to have the pouches used at home, I would probably encourage it, except that we would have to figure out how to get them access to the little unlocking system.
Good question, like what if they forget to unlock it? Is there an option for them to unlock it later?
No, no. You're welcome. No, I'm just kidding. I don't, again, I don't, again, what that looks like, I don't, I don't know the, I don't know if the magnet is a universal magnet or if they're specific to our pouches that we get. I'm guessing it's a universal magnet that we could.
I would hope not because all those magnets in the science lab are going to go missing.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't, I mean, I mean, like, um, not a general magnet. I'm talking about a magnet proprietary to Yonder.
Yeah.
Right, so like if you went on the Yonder website as a parent and bought the magnet, does that go with all the pouches? Not a general magnet, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. I don't know, so I don't know, I, I don't know if it's proprietary to our model, our set.
It's become a black market for Yonder pouches.
I, I have no, I have no idea. I don't, I don't know.
But I think a lot of that comes with the Yonder training. Basically, how all these questions are rolling out is probably going to be all the questions that, uh, parents and staff members have in August too. So, um, you know, the training that comes with the Yonder pouches should hopefully cover all of these things.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just want to add, I would think also really talking to the other districts that are already using them. And I mean, that's to me, because you're hearing it straight from the people who are asking, not the company who is going to, of course, present the best case scenario, but really just hearing more of the actual on-the-ground.
Yeah, and at Pathways in New Brunswick, the middle school there, their new middle school that they opened, you know, the, the administrative team said, you know, at first it was very troubling because it was like trying to like get the burner phones and, you know, the resistance and then who remembers their pouches? But, you know, they got into a groove by like October, November and they said it's been remarkable and, um, really pleasant. And the students actually have been having like really great positive feedback because they're not distracted by it. And, you know, it's, now it's routine, right? So anything new always comes with these sort of issues. But I think if they can, it's just about continuity and routine and, and sticking to it, um, that I think will be helpful.
Yeah, I hope that's the case too for us, especially because I think when I was looking at the regulation, um, and I just pulled it up again to see sort of where, and then it's not, not until the fourth offense when a parent is required to come in, um, before the, at some point before the end of the school day to, in order to be able to pick up the student's phone if the student's phone gets confiscated, which to me is just, who, what, you know, that's just putting a burden on parents who may not even be able to just get here before the end of the school day. Um, but it looks like that's only for the fourth offense, I believe, that that's the requirement for the fourth offense. So I'm wondering, again, how likely is it that one student's going to get to a fourth, uh, you know, offense? We don't know, but I think that's something to really think about if, you know, just kind of looking at that and the impact it's going to have on families.
Yeah, and I think when we, when we look at that data this year, um, and the disciplinary data, kind of looking at what level of the offense, like if it's a, if they got the, like, you know, that, that level of offense, like to what level was that? And then kind of tracking that data to see how long, you know, how, how many times are these students doing this? And is it the same student, you know, what, what are we looking at for that? That data, very important.
No more questions? All right, I'll move on to personnel. So the first item on personnel is, um, appointments for Michael Spino, our new guidance counselor at the middle school, and Dr. Richardson, um, our EEP at the middle school to be the anti-bullying specialists for our middle school. Um, number two is an approval of a leave and absence. Um, number three is approval of appointments as listed. Some to highlight are our new speech-language pathologist, um, Sarah Zimmer. And we also are extending our theater class to, uh, have a, our theater teacher will be a full-time employee, not a part-time employee. Unfortunately, we're not able to staff dance, um, part-time dance teacher. So, um, thankfully, we are going to have a full-time theater teacher instead. Um, we have one transfer from Ms. Peterson from Irving to the high school. We have a resignation from Alexandra Colletia and Ashley Huggins and Derek Ressa. Um, we have the approval for reappointment of our teacher associates as listed. And we have a read-in, thank you. Um, the read-ins are just adjustments on the salaries. So for A, line M A, it's $40,507.60. Line B is $37,917.60. Line C is $40, I'm sorry, $40,507.60. D is $39,271.26. E is $37,918.00. And F is $37,917.60. Um, the number seven is the approval of location and extra compensation for paraprofessionals. Um, they are all as listed as well, so this is where each paraprofessional will be, um, of staffed and then also read-ins for these. Um, so we have, um, A is, uh, this is this, wait. Okay. So A is $24,979.91. Another, uh, the next one is line item T, $22,584.85. Uh, item AA, $24,903.46. B B. BV, twenty-four thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars six cents. VV is twenty-five thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars eighty-seven cents. YY is twenty-four thousand one hundred forty-six dollars eighty-five cents. And AAA is twenty-two thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars eighty-five cents. Number eight is a resolution for the before and after-care program staff contract to sunset. That would sunset effective June thirtieth, 2025. Number nine is the approval of toileting stipends for some paraprofessionals. I also have read-ins for these, for. We're adding those. We're adding these, oh, okay. So the next, the P is Margarita Chenaloy for Irving. Q, Priscilla Izzari, Irazari at Irving. R is Maria Milan, I apologize if I mispronounce your name, Sierra at Irving. S is Sabira Niger at Irving. T is Ho Yi Wong at Irving. And U is Audra Zadati at Irving. And again, I apologize if I mispronounced anybody's name. Okay, that's that. That's personnel. After all those read-ins, stressful. And then for policy and regulation, we have the following policies for second reading, the use of electronic communication devices, the policy and the regulation, and the cooperation with law enforcement agencies, policies and regulations. Okay, now it is time for our second public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policy number zero-one-six-seven establishes and regulates the right of the public to participate in public meetings. There is nobody here in person, so Angelo, how many do we have online? Okay, if anybody online has a public, a public comment, please raise your hand. And with no hands raised, we are going to close public comment. We'll proceed to our board action items. Curriculum and instruction.
I move items one through thirteen.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes, except for abstain from the hip, because I missed the executive session. Is that right? Did I say the right thing?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Proust?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Abstain from two, and yes, everything else.
Thank you. Ms. Bardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Okay, finance of facilities.
I move items one to thirteen. Thirteen is that read-in on approval of Level the Playing Field Grant.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Proust?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Bardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Okay, for personnel, I'd like to move numbers one through nine.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Abstain from one and three, and yes, everything else.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes. Is there anything I should, I, I think it's okay to say yes to these, despite not being in session? Is that right, Allison?
Yes, there's no, no conditions of employment affected. You're okay.
Ms. Proust?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Bardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voor.
Yes.
And for policy and regulation, I move number one. Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Proust?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Bardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is any board liaison reports? Does anyone have a report to share? Okay, for my president's report tonight, I'm just going to issue a reminder to complete your board evaluation. Please do that as soon as possible. And then old business, the only thing I wanted to, well, I'm sure anybody else has old business, you're welcome to bring it up too. But one of the things that Ms. Friedman said when we decided to reorganize was to kind of check what everyone was feeling about those decisions mid-year. So it's mid-year. Does anybody have any issues or concerns with the one meeting a month, or how the committees are running at this point? Or should we proceed as we are?
No, I'm still just working out what form I want to use for.
I feel like that, I feel like that the form needs revision, so that's something we'll, we'll work on, yeah. It's a little bit, it's a little bit tricky. I think maybe keeping the agenda form and then just adding a notes box at the bottom of each one is probably fine.
Yeah.
So I'll make that, yeah.
That's about all I could.
Yeah, I think that that's.
Yeah, I agree.
Perfect.
But I think that the, this new system is, is great. I think it's, it feels like much less time, less, much less of a time for board members, but yet the work is still getting done. So, you know, I feel, I feel good about it.
It's a lot more streamlined, I think.
Streamlined.
A lot more organized, and I get, I think we're getting more discussion.
Okay.
We are, it's true.
I think the committee structure has been extraordinary. It's been a, I think, real improvement this year, and also the communication between the board members and committees, I think, has increased, which has led to, I think, more in-depth discussions and, you know, less siloing of board members. I think it's fantastic.
And I really enjoy the three-person structure, so that people can pop in to be like an extra body, and, and the other committees choose. And I know that a lot of people have taken advantage of that, so I really like that model. All right, so then we'll continue this. I mean, we have had, on average, more than one meeting a month, because we have had to have the tax levy meeting and the meeting to approve the after-school. So we are trending above, above one meeting. But when the fall comes around and we start scheduling for next year, we'll kind of touch base and see if like the timing of the committees worked, you know, and the board meetings, you know, in comparison to when the board meeting dates are going to be, once we check the calendars and everything, so. And then we'll work on revising the notes form. Okay? Anybody else have old business? Okay, any new business? All right, I move we adjourn.
Second.